All right, I'm Ellen Perez. And we are here with Zone Three School Board candidates. And we are going to throw some questions at them after they introduce themselves. But as a reminder, everyone needs to vote on May the 24th. That the school board elections are not decided in the general election. They are decided in the primary. And so new school board members elected in May will take their seat in June. So we have three candidates with us today. Brady Cotton could not be here today. He tried his best to be back in town, but he couldn't make it. And so we're sorry that he's not here. But we do have three people participating in our conversation. And we're gonna go ahead and let them introduce themselves.
My name's Logan Roddy. I grew up here in Huntsville, went to high school here in Huntsville. Moved off for a little bit after I graduated and became a police officer. Where eventually I ended up moving back here, buying some family land and becoming a sheriff's deputy here. Left that position in 2018 and started my own company and been running it since then.
I'm Heidi Kenberg, and I'm a retiring teacher. And this will be my last year. I've taught for 38 years. Five, the first five were at Kingston. And the last 33 have been here in this district. And I loved every minute of it.
Hello, my name is Danny Thomas. I grew up here in Madison County in Huntsville, went to school here all my life in Huntsville. Have a wife that's a school teacher in the district. Three daughters, seem to be four daughters in the, in the school system, starting this year. Graduated three from Huntsville High School already. Real estate agent, auctioneer, and do a lot of charity benefits, et cetera. And we have a farm here in Madison County. And it's probably bigger.
Okay, we're gonna start it with the questions. And Logan said you would first, Connie, we're gonna give you the first question. What are your thoughts on the district's growth in numbers and in diversity? And what ideas do you have for managing that growth?
Well, I'm hoping we're having growth. Because for several years, we had a drop in enrollment. And so I'm hoping that we'll get back there. That, that's super important, that our school can offer more things if we have more kids. It provides more jobs in the community. And we see a lot of growth. We've got the housing division out there. I don't know what, what it's called. Oh, Cedar Bluff, that's what it's called. And I can't believe how many houses in one year have gone up there. And a couple of other little places. And so I don't know if I can say what will happen. And all the things we need to do now. I mean, that would mean more teachers. Maybe we've got the new facility that's going up that will help that we can have maybe graduations and things here. But I don't know that I know what's coming next.
Repeat the question one more time for me.
What are your thoughts on the district's growth in numbers and in diversity? And what ideas do you have for managing that growth?
We are definitely, we're up in numbers compared to last year as far as students go, student population. Being in the real estate business is one of my jobs. There is definitely a large growth in Madison County, in Huntsville. There is, there's no inventory for people that are trying to move here now. And a lot of people are moving in here and retiring from other places, all over the United States. So the growth is gonna continue to come, whether we want it to or whether we don't. It's, it's coming. And it's happening now. I definitely foresee a growth. And I'm anxious to see this next week what our kindergarten, you know, stats are whenever it comes to kids that are gonna be enrolled. Last year was a phenomenal year. I mean, just huge, huge numbers of kindergarten kids last year. I expect it to be the same this year. And we are building new facilities. And we're about to see those projects finished, hopefully end of September. And CT programs are already in place. We've got built and, and they're moving forward now. And lots of opportunity for those kids that are not gonna go to college to be enrolled in those programs. And graduate, you know, from those programs, whether it's CNA stuff, or welding, or diesel mechanics, et cetera. So we're trying to address the growth of what's coming. And that's what we've been trying to do. And I'm excited about it.
All right, Logan.
All right, I might ask you a repeat question.
What are your thoughts on the district's growth in numbers and diversity? And what ideas do you have for managing that growth?
Okay, so on the growth and diversity, I believe that we're ready for it in Madison County. We need to get the growth over here. We need to get the people moving in here. We have a great county here. And so I think that we just need to make sure we get people here. I think it can be difficult to sit here and say exactly what you would do to prepare for something of that nature until you actually start having numbers to go and look at to build and base off your decisions. I think so far, as Connie and Danny both stated, we're already moving in the right direction by putting housing developments in here to allow for people to move in. We're building other programs in our schools, other facilities. So I think we're already heading in the right direction. I think it's just important that we, we focus on the numbers that are actually coming here and then kind of structure around that.
So you get to ask questions?
I do get to ask you questions.
So I get a good perk?
It is your turn.
Okay. And we've, we've all talked about this topic before. It's a community discussion. This is one that was submitted to us, okay? The school board has an optics problem with regards to transparency. Prior to meetings, board members eat together in the conference room. Many community members believe that isn't transparent. Board business could be discussed. If elected or reelected, would you commit to eating your meal in the open boardroom in front of the public rather than behind closed doors?
Absolutely. If that's, if that's something that bothers community members, or it's something that puts off the wrong persona about what takes place whenever we eat, whenever we come. Absolutely, I have no problem with that. And as a matter of fact, me and Ellen even had this conversation about six months ago, or maybe a year ago, about this very thing. And I can see where that that would cause some people to feel that way or think that way. That's not what takes place. But at the same time, I have no problem with that at all. And we've also made sure that we've tried to dismember that over the last few months. And I think Ellen and you both could probably see that we've tried to move away from that just because of those reasons.
I would have to kind of pick a couple of things that I think that absolutely, I wouldn't have any issue if that was a problem eating in front of people. I mean, if that's what happens right before a school board meeting, everybody eats together, that about means I'm happy with eating in front of somebody. That way they can know what's going on.
Just, you don't want them to, as long as you don't mind eating in front of people.
And I'm even for, like, do we even have to have a meal? What, the meeting usually starts at seven?
Usually starts at seven.
So I keep, yeah, so I don't even know that there even needs to actually be a meal. So I agree that, I don't think it's appropriate to have it not public.
Okay. All right, Logan, this will be for you. So Mrs. Kimble, Superintendent Kimble graciously offered us, or we did a FOIA request on some parent surveys that were recently completed. And in those parent surveys, this is not the majority, but some people answered the survey that they felt like the board had not been effective. That some people said the superintendent, not all, not all, said that the superintendent had not been effective. Others said the board's communication to the community was not effective. And surprisingly, one other responses I saw was the community, the parents didn't feel like the board provided enough information on how the money was spent. So based upon that, how would you work to restore the community's faith in the way the board communicates, in the board and in the superintendent? And how would you provide more information to the community about how the money is being spent?
So if I understand the question correctly, I don't think it's, I don't think we can sit here and point fingers at one person directly on the board and say that they're not being effective. That's the whole aspect of having a board, is they have to come together and they have to make decisions together for what's good for the community. As far as the way that money is being spent, at the end of the day, what we have to think about as a board and as a school district is it's our children here, the community has to be involved in that. And so without knowing all the ins and outs of exactly what goes on during a school board meeting and having the firsthand knowledge of that, I can't sit here and say I know exactly how all that works, because I don't. You know, I'm willing to learn. But I would say that it's taxpayers' money. And so when taxpayers have questions about where that money's going for the school district and for the kids' education and activities and things like that, we have to be willing to share that information with them. And say, and if, you know, I don't know, like I said, what's happened before, if it was hid or what, but we just have to be, make sure we're getting that information out to them so they can understand. And if they have questions, be willing to answer those questions.
I don't, I think it's, I've been on PPC, which is several, several times on.
What is it, PPC?
At the Personnel Policy Committee. And so we take looks at some of those things. I can't say I'm an expert at reading any kind of financial report for the school. But we've had a look at that. And there, as he probably can attest, there are line after line after line of items. Maybe if that could be expressed in terms of, in the yearly report, like X amount was spent on athletics, X amount was spent towards teacher salary percent wise. New programs, maybe in lumps and maintenance, where it was easier for the public to understand what, where the money was going. Rather than, and having them feel like maybe there's something being hidden. I don't think they can hide it. They have an audit every single year. But I think we need to be effective in letting people know, is it going, where is it going?
Repeat, I already know it. Go ahead and repeat the question one more time, so I won't hear you go through all of it again.
So the parents recently completed a community survey conducted by the Huntsville School District.
We're not talking about majority, we're just talking about.
Well, when parents went in to do the parent teacher conference, yes, they answered it. Now, not the majority at all, but looking through the survey, some of the concerns that parents had were the effectiveness of the board. The way you could answer the question was, is the board effective, yes or no, or not sure? And so many of the responses, but not all, by any stretch, so I'm not implying that. But there, there were more not effective than probably in the past. Questioning whether the board was effective, questioning whether the superintendent was effective, and questioning communication to the community from the Huntsville School District. And then also saying they weren't sure how their money was being spent. So I'm not implying that money is, there's no malfeasance on the part of financials here. They were just saying, we really would like to know more about how that money is being spent. So that's the question. How can you work to improve on the survey results of the parents who had concerns about those things? What can you do to improve those survey results for next year?
Absolutely. Okay, so to sum it all up, to be honest with you, it's just, it's communication. Plain and simple. I mean, that's, that's the key to a lot of different things a lot. Communication, anytime that anybody's had a question, has approached me personally, or another board member to my knowledge, and asked a financial question or anything of that nature, it got answered. We found out, if we didn't know the answer, we wouldn't found out the answer. And yes, we're audited every year. I'm going next Thursday to sit down and go through the audit for this year. So I, I have a hard time, I have a hard time, I guess, wrapping my mind around the idea of the board not being effective or we, you know, as far as progress or what we've done to this point, because of all the good things that has taken place and all the things that we have overcame and put in motion with the millage, or with the millage situation, you know, CT buildings, the Gymnasium Activity Center, et cetera, et cetera. So I feel like we've done quite a bit to really progress and make things better. And I'm proud to be a part of that. And the communication, anytime anybody has had anything that they ask a question of, I've tried to get them the answer if I didn't know the answer. When it comes to the financials, as Connie was talking about, yes, the lines are forevermore. So I get, I usually on Fridays, I get the agenda for the monthly meeting. And that's when the financial reports will be in my email. And if there's any questions, and I go through all that, and I look from line to line, and try to compare it to last month and to last year to see, you know, if there's any discrepancies or such. And if there is, and I get a question, or I don't feel comfortable with something, I call Audrey. I say, hey, what's this about, you know, what's different now than it was then, et cetera? And I try to get answers. And so if somebody does ask me in the community what's going on, I'm able to give them that, that information.
Can I make another statement on that?
Sure.
They both said something that kind of run something with me. When I took over and started as an entrepreneur, things like P and L balance sheets are a big part of being an entrepreneur. Those are things that I didn't have any idea. And that's basically what they're talking about, your line items of all your, your expenses. I think that if the community is not feeling like they're involved in this, and they're, they don't feel like they're getting answers from the board, then maybe we bring in a professional that can explain, have a meeting, a live meeting or whatever the case may be, to explain exactly how a financial report looks into the, the general public. Because it can be very overwhelming, all those numbers and you don't know where everything's going. So I think that there are definitely options on bringing in the right personnel or a professional that specializes in that kind of stuff, if they don't currently feel that way, the community.
It's nice that you all agree on the conversation, Connie, so if that goes around with our next question.
I wanted to say, because I think we kind of all focused on the money. And I, when you repeated the question, I realized effectiveness. And I think that word needs to have a definition when we're talking about it. When you're saying, is the superintendent effective? Well, for me, if, let's say Ms. Kimble hadn't gotten new textbooks or something, then I would say, could possibly say that. Of course she did get the new textbooks, so. But I think it's the board's job, with the community's help, to provide a vision and a goal so that we can judge whether or not the board's effective. Did we accomplish the things we needed that we set out to do this year? Did the superintendent make those things move along? We can, I think a lot of people just like to throw that out there and say, oh, they weren't effective, they weren't this. But I think if we had that vision first and set goals to meet that vision, then we could check it off and say, yeah, we were really effective this year. The superintendent was effective. Or ma'am, we said we needed to stay within the budget and, and that didn't happen, so they weren't effective. So I think that needs to be something, that needs to be addressed by the board when they form again.
And you'll be the first to answer this question, which is kind of like segue from what you all have, how you all answered that last one. How can you get more people to attend the board meetings and contribute if they aren't allowed to speak? Would you commit to having public discussions again?
And this is a reader question that was brought to us.
Well, first of all, we've got to get them out of that little teeny spot. I mean, there's not enough room. I've been at a school board meeting where it was standing room only, and they were spilled out, and they're standing outside. So obviously, people aren't feeling like they're, there's a lot of open communication. I don't know exactly what needs to be happening, because I'm sure Danny can attest, some of those meetings go on a long, long time already. So if you just open it to the public every single time, but maybe we could have some sort of, people are supposed to put in, if they have questions, they can approach the superintendent and say, I have this question, you can get put on the agenda before. Can they still do that? And so maybe we need to have a little more of that, let people be more aware of it. And I've been at a school board meeting, and I think this was really positive when somebody had a question and the board members did recognize somebody in the audience, because it was an immediate issue and a question. So I, I think that's the way to go. We have to have that open communication, and at the same time, have to have some sort of rules so it doesn't get out of hand and it doesn't go too long.
I think that, I think that it's a very, it's a double edged sword. It really is. It depends on what position you're in. Are you, if you're on the school board or a superintendent sitting there, or if you're in, in the public, or somebody in the faculty. In order to conduct business, to go in and conduct your business on a monthly basis and do your business, conduct it in a lawful manner, and proceed throughout the night and be done, you, you can't just open it up to the public. I'm not saying that people shouldn't have the right to approach the, the board or superintendent and ask questions and get questions answered. I totally do not. If I was in the public instead of, or in that position at the moment, I'd feel the same way. I have no problem with that at all. But there has to be some type of protocol that's followed in order to conduct it in a way that it needs to be conducted as business and a governing, governing body. And so getting on the agenda, as Connie mentioned, you can call and get on the agenda, you can email, you can write in, you can stop by and get on the agenda, whatever the case may be, and you can be presented at the board to discuss whatever it is you want to discuss, as long as you don't discuss personnel names. But I welcome somebody to do that. Anybody that wants to do that, you know, I think that's a good thing. I don't have any problems with that whatsoever. And I've always tried to, in the past, and it's not always been easy, but I have always in the past tried to acknowledge and discuss what needed to be discussed.
I think, just for a little more clarification, and you guys can add more to your answer if you want to, but before you answer, I think the question is more rooted on if you attend a meeting and there are things that are discussed and voted on. There, at one point in time, we did have a small token of time where you could have public discussion about those things. And there's not that anymore either. I think that's more what people are. Because sometimes something will come up in a meeting that they didn't know that they wanted to ask a question about. So how do we make that available to them again?
That's a very tough question. It's a very tough question to answer, because who knows what that's gonna be? And how do you get that in front of them beforehand? So that they can be thinking about a question that they might have. Because if you just kind of fly into the seat of your pants, so to speak, as you go through the meeting, and then somebody disrupts the meeting or wants to ask a question, and then that goes to somebody else asking a question pretty soon. Trust me, after three or four hours of a meeting or so, or sometimes longer, where does it stop? Where's it end? So it's a very, it's a very double edged sword. Like I said, I, I encourage those people to get on the agenda and ask the questions they want to ask. But as far as being able to, you know, field it on the run, it's, it's hard to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I think that, just like Danny said, I mean, you're going to, you can't anticipate what's gonna go on in a, in a board meeting. And so to try to plan for a question that they don't even know that they're gonna have in talk when the meeting's underway is really hard, because maybe you have people that want to ask questions that are in favor of what happened. Or maybe you have people that want to ask questions that are not in favor of it. And like Danny had mentioned, after so long, you have to still continue to keep this board, this board meeting on track. And so I would think that if, if that's a problem and the community is interested in that, then maybe we need to sit down and think about what other ways can we approach this? Is there a, a after meeting ballot that they fill out, that they would like for the, the committee or the, the board members to review as, as a group for the next meeting? So that way they can try to address those questions? Because you, you'll never anticipate what everybody's gonna ask. And so I think that that can be very, very hard to, to handle at the time. I think that's kind of one of those things where, as Danny mentioned, it's a double edged sword. I think you kind of have to approach that behind the fact of, you know, like, the next meeting, you can't do it right then. So, but I'm absolutely open to the, the communicating. If they have the questions, we need to get them answered, so.
And I'm saying, we might want to make the agenda more available to the public. Because that, I know even being on PPC sometimes, it was very hard to know exactly what was gonna happen at the meeting. So how can you even prepare to ask questions or ask, you know, you don't know what's gonna be happening?
And, and I don't disagree with, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that at all. But with the agenda, with the agenda, it's very difficult to have that out a week in advance. You know, or three, four, or five days in advance. Because on Fridays, whenever the agenda's prepared, and sometimes even Saturday when it's prepared, there's a lot of times, there's still things coming in, whether it's a resignation, or whether it's a hire, or whether it's a transfer. There's something continuing to come on. Even on Monday mornings, there's things that are happening, or Monday during the day, it's being added or taken off of the agenda. So it's just kind of, it's one of those things that it's hard to get all of the information for somebody to study prior to.
And if it could be done like on the website, you know, if that, for sure, that morning of the board meeting, if somebody that's very interested could pull up and see what's gonna go on, then they have time to call, you know, their school board member and say, I see this is happening, you know, I'm, what, what is this exactly about? Because sometimes the agendas are very, they try not to put much in it, so it's not, you don't always know exactly what is happening. And even like, they don't even put necessarily all the resignations, retires, or whatever on the agenda for that night. It'll just say, you know, it's really very general, so.
And I also want to say, kind of like what Connie said about the, the building being small. You know, during some of these recent board members, when people are backed out into the parking lot, how can they, how can you expect them to feel heard when they can't even hear what's going on in that board meeting inside? We have to focus on getting an area, I mean, we've got cafeterias and we've got other things like that that I'm sure the school, we, we could use as a board to, to go and discuss these, that will hold the amount of people that want to attend these meetings.
We'll use the new Coliseum, I mean, Activities.
So while we're talking about the board, this is another question. I think we start with you. So we all know there have been some Title IX issues within the district and transparency issues within the district. What would you do personally to restore the public's trust in the school board and the district?
So first and foremost, we've just got to be transparent with the, with the community. I think that there was some issues recently where some questions were being asked. And the thing that everybody's got to understand is, you can't just come into a board meeting and expect every answer to be, or every question to be answered, because there is still juvenile rights that you have to think about as a board. So taking that in consideration, I think there comes a point to where, when there's legal advice that's involved in this and you're being instructed not to answer certain questions, I think there comes a point to where the board needs to say, okay, it's time for you to come answer questions, because we were being hounded on this over and over and over again. And the, the community's not getting what they want. We need to be transparent with them within the legal rights that we have. So why don't you attend this meeting and you answer questions? So just being able to, look, they, they still might not like the answer at the end of the day, that the, the attorney gives them. But get the person that is, that can answer those questions available to answer those questions for the community.
I agree with that. I think that maybe some of this could have been helped. We can't talk about, I mean, as a teacher, I don't know exactly names and who, what happened, because I'm not, I shouldn't be privileged to know that information. But there could have been a statement made. There could have been, if we would have got out ahead of it, maybe said, this is, this has happened. These accusations have been made, that this and this occurred, and that we presented it, and right out front, instead of, you know. I, I don't think, nobody wanted this to happen. Nobody wants this sort of thing. But I think that's what we need to do, and as that progresses, say, this is more statements. This is where we are, this is what we can say up to this point, and this is what has occurred, and, and how much has been investigated. We have whatever was going on. And I just think we needed continual updates to make the public feel that nothing was being hidden. Nothing was trying to be hidden. But you know, it's easier to say after the fact.
Well, I appreciate that. Because as far as the Title IX issue and transparency part, and someone that lived through it, it was, you know, we fell on the ball on the run, just like I said earlier. Things were coming in. We was being hit from different directions with different things. There was an ongoing investigation. We had legal instruction not to say lots of different things, not to talk about it, and definitely not to talk about it between each other. So the superintendent and myself had a lot to deal with in a, in a hurry. And, you know, when it comes to juveniles, underage kids, you know, names, et cetera, has got to be protected. Families, et cetera, regardless of what side of the fence they're on. And it was a very difficult time. And we'd done the very best we could, felt like that we'd done everything we could and done a good job with what we had to go with and work with at the time. And back to what Logan said earlier, at one point, finally, we got to the point that we was having a legal counsel come and set the meeting so that they could field questions, because after a few months of taking care of all of it ourselves, or trying to, and field those questions, it just got to be a liability situation to where the, you know, you're the one that's, you're the one that's. i- it just got to be a liability situation to where the, you know, you're the one that's, you're the lawyer. You need to come and speak for us, because you're telling us to do this or not do that. It's time for you to come and step in and make sure that they understand what we're doing. So tha- that's how, that's how I see it.
Okay. That's a good segue into the next question. Then I promise you, we move off of the heavy, heavy stuff and into regular stuff.
I like the heavy discussion.
And this, and this, we'll, we'll start with you, because you are current.
Of course you will.
I mean, I, we can love it, but, uh, because you are a current and you guys are potential. So what have you learned, and this is equal for all of you, what have you learned from what you saw with the Title IX conversations that you think could have been different with the board and the community? What, um, what should we do differently in the future?
Uh, I'll have to revert back to one of those other board members or other people, candidates that was talking about tough question. That's a tough question. Um, it's hard to, it's hard to, um, it's hard to say what would you do? And it's hard to say what you should have done if you hadn't done it. And so, um, it was a very rough time, and, um, lots of stress, lots of late nights, lots of misery, um, to go through for a lot of people involved, and I'm talking about from students to parents to family, to board members, to administrators, and so on and so forth. It was a, it was a tough time, one of the toughest times we've probably ever seen in this Huntsville School District, for sure. Yeah, and probably the hardest time. Um, and it was rough on the community. Um, and, um, it's a, it's a healing process, is kind of where we're at, and trying to heal. And, uh, you know, I've done what I could, I've, I've done the best I could in the community to field questions and, and things as they've come that I could answer. Um, but, um, to do things different than, than I did, I, I don't know that I could have. Um, I really and truly believe whenever I lay down at night, I know I did the right thing, and I, I believe that, because I wouldn't do the wrong thing. That's just the way it is. I wouldn't do it, not, not with anything to do with these kids. The only reason that I'm on this school board, and I've served two different times in my life, um, on the school board, is because I care about this community and the kids, and I would do nothing to jeopardize that. And so to say that I would go back and do something different, I, I, I don't know what I would have done different, to be honest, under the circumstances I was dealing with.
Connie?
So, so repeat the question, just to make sure.
What have you learned from what you saw with the Title IX conversations, um, that you think the board and community should do differently in the future, between the board and the community?
Well, the one thing, what I've already said, is that come out periodically and make statements as it progressed. So that we know what's happening, even though we don't know details. It's one of the things I've learned as a teacher in school that's broken my heart, that our kids did not feel safe enough to tell any adult, not even their own parents, and that breaks my heart, and that, so we've gotta do something to gain the trust of the kids and not just community, a- as adults. Um, we need to have some sort of training, I think, for all the staff again, over this issue. To make sure nobody has to say, everybody can say, no, I heard this, and this minute I went and called. Because that's, then you don't have to worry about it. You said, no, I did this, and I did it on this day, and this is the case number, 'cause they give you a case number. Um, we also need to have, I've had a kid play, um, sports in college. They all have to sit down and listen through NCAA rules and regulations, and what can be allowed and what not to do, and if something is happening to you, who do you report it to? I think those kids all need to understand and be, um, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, because obviously there were some that didn't understand that. And, um, as many kids that had been involved, I know there's a bunch of good kids. And I just think that we're gonna have to make sure we do something to help those kids to make sure this doesn't happen again. They understand when they cross the line, what will happen, and, and provide that information to those kids. It just is, this breaks my heart that they didn't feel safe enough to come sooner and tell anybody.
So I would say, um, kind of revert it back to transparency first and foremost. You know, we gotta talk about what's going on within the, the realm of what we're allowed to talk about, and then have the right personnel there to talk about the things we can't, with what they can't answer. But I do also have to agree that, um, education is very, very important, and it's education from the students all the way to the, the top of everybody. Um, even have education for the parents available, um, for, for signs and things like that. Um, to sit here and say what I would have done different, or what I think the school board should have done different, I can't say that. I wasn't there. I don't know both sides of the stories. You get told certain things by certain people, and, and you're, you're trying to, people expect you to make a judgment call, or, or base your judgments based off of what they're saying, and you can't do that. You just, you do, there's, you just legally, or you cannot morally do that. So, um, I think it's just very important that we, we educate the students, we educate the staff of, um, both what is acceptable and what's not, and then, um, just continue to provide an education for them. Um, and be, be able to open up for students to come, have a, a place for them where they can feel safe, um, to, to be able to express those kind of concerns.
I appreciate y'all's time on that. I know that that's not the most fun conversation in this whole realm of conversation, so. But it's, it's, it is a point of conversation still. Um, so let's go move on to teachers. So this year, um, at the high school, um, my son's class, but all of the Spanish classes ended at Christmas break. And it left many of the students having to choose another path entirely, as in switch to a different class, or transition to a now online format for their Spanish class. How can we recruit teachers to come to Huntsville and stay, so that the classes and the students don't have to be transitioned mid-year?
Hey Connie.
I don't, I don't.
Because we get so engrossed.
I can tell you, um, that is actually something that's been worked on around now. Um, we have had a problem with our Spanish teachers as far as being able to keep them here. And we've had, I think it was two, or if not three, that has, I mean, and one of them just was a week or so and gone, so. Um, but, you know, it's a very difficult situation. In order to, you know, how can I, how do we bring that teacher in here and, and retain that teacher? You know, I, I, that's a good question. I don't even know how you would answer that. Um, to go to virtual, yeah, or online, I should say, yes, I, I get that not having that teacher one-on-one is not the best scenario, for sure. Um, I just don't know what the pool is out there to get that teacher here. I think that where we're located, I think that it tends to be that they're able to go to one of the big four, because it's a little closer to where, um, those teachers seem to come from. And so if they have the opportunity to get a job in that area, they automatically move, because it's just closer to home.
I do want to clarify, I'm not knocking that it went to online. I have one child that is still fully virtual, and I have kudos of respect for what the district has done to provide that. It's just the transition from a certain style and cultural experience of teaching to the online, so.
But to, to answer, to answer that question, there's no way to, there's no way to actually keep a teacher from saying, you know, I'm, I'm transferring, I wanna quit, I wanna move, I'm resigning, there's no way that you can keep them from doing that. It's all, it's an all individual decision that they have to make, and I don't think that we're doing anything wrong, um, on, on that particular situation or that, that subject, as far as a teacher. Um, it's just a matter of, we've, we've been, had a hard time finding the right fit that's willing to stay and, and stay with us. So that's the only way I know how to answer that.
So I'd like a little clarified question here. Are we talking specifically the Spanish teacher or just teachers in general?
Well, we used, that was a question that was asked online by another parent, but it resonated with me, because my son was one of the, was in another period that had to transition. So really just teacher retention, um, and we just used that as the vessel. No, you're, you, you got it. You can come back to it too. But that's really kind of the heart of it, is that at mid-year is kind of the, the point of which some, so many parents were, what do we do? Because for our, for a student to graduate with high honors at Huntsville, they have to take four months. Not knocking that we have online options. I think that is brilliant and a great move by the district, because we can offer so much more. The difference is, is that we had a classroom for Spanish teach, and we had a Spanish teacher, and then the kids went to Christmas break, and they came back and they went to class, and they had no teacher anymore, because the teacher left, not because there wasn't another option, just that. So it's a retention question, really.
So the retention question is about any teachers? Is what's your, is that your question?
Yes, yes. It's, it's retention, really.
Okay. Well, can, you want me to go ahead and finish then? Okay. Well, i- if that's, if that's the case, and we're not talking about just the Spanish teacher, a- as far as just the retention part of teachers, I think we're in, I think we're doing that. I think we're getting there. We really are. I think we're getting there. We are getting, uh, lots of new applications for these teachers. Um, we're soliciting those new teachers that are coming out of college and, and looking for a job, and that's been going really well. Um, and we've done our best to try to continue to upgrade the salaries for the teachers. Um, and, um, I, I think that, I think the retention is, is actually starting to come. I really do. That's one instance that's not worked, but overall, I think that, um, we're doing our very best that we can financially to compete. Um, because when you go to the big four, uh, there's, you, you can't, you can't compete. We're talking about an automatic twelve thousand, fifteen thousand dollar a year difference in, in salary, just from here to there. And, and, and you can't, you can't compete with that, because the money's not there.
Yeah.
So, as a business owner, and as somebody that's had to hire and retain employees for, for both companies, the company I previously sold and the company I currently run now, um, after you have so many applicants come and go throughout your doors, you have to stop and you have to figure out, okay, why have I not retained these employees, first and foremost? Look, in today's society, uh, studies show that it's, don't get me wrong, money and benefit packages are great, right? But studies show that it's not all about money. People want to work for a place that they feel welcome, that they feel part of a team. And so what are we doing as a school district to make these teachers feel part of the team? Are we even doing anything to make them feel part of the, of a team? Uh, are we doing exit interviews, when these folks are wanting to leave and go to these other districts and finding out the root problem of why they're wanting to leave our school district? Um, I think that giving the teachers a voice to, to create a culture, look, Huntsville School District's been in the paper the last couple of years, and it's not been great news that the paper's having a print on our district. So why would you expect a teacher to come here and wanna tie their name to our district with that kind of publicity? We've got to give them a reason to want to be here, want to stay here. And, and until you can get to the root problem of what the problem is, you can't fix it. You have to do, get to the root problem.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with, um, to Logan, because I've just recently heard, I'm just saying, I don't know this is for sure, but I heard that we had an applicant that took a job at Kingston instead, which I know pays way less than us. So there has to be a reason, like you said, it's not the money. When you go into teaching, you don't go into it for the money. The money, you're never gonna make huge sums of money. But I think some of the things we could do is, we're gonna have to look at, and I recently gave, um, the superintendent an idea, and she looked it over, and at this time, and I'm sure she said she didn't think it could happen, but the state every year offers a list of the areas that need, that are in teacher need, that the, that there's not enough teachers. And so I had made a suggestion that maybe we give some sort of stipend if you're in one of those areas. So special ed teachers, always on the list. So special ed teachers would be able to get a, a stipend, because they staying in that job. And sometimes you have special ed teachers, it's a lot of work and a lot of paperwork, and they'll change from there out. Well, maybe that extra stipend would help them to stay in there. Another thing that in the past that was available was mentors. And the district would pay like twelve hundred dollars to a teacher that was already there, they considered a master teacher, to be a mentor to that new teacher. And we don't do that anymore, that I know of. So that might be something that maybe some of these people, the Spanish teacher, maybe if he would have had somebody there helping him and mentoring him, maybe he would have made it. They could have addressed his issues, and maybe he wouldn't have left, or, um, some of the other teachers too. So I think those are some things we need to really look at.
Okay. And I know we've talked about teacher retention, but now we're gonna switch just a minute and say, how are we gonna hire teachers to come to our district? And this is an example that somebody in the community at St. Paul brought to us. Currently, the CTE building in St. Paul is not being utilized, because the district could not find a qualified teacher. How can you ensure that the school will offer all the programs it promises, and how can the school go about hiring qualified teachers? Now, that being said, I know that the last time we asked Superintendent Kimble about this, she was trying to find a teacher. So that, that may have changed, and Danny, if you know more information on that, you know, please feel free to share that. But I think the point is, we have the, this new CTE building in St. Paul, but we're not being able to staff it, because sometimes teachers don't want to go, um, to St. Paul to teach. And so how do we bring teachers in to keep our promise of these programs that we, that we've said we wanna offer?
What is the CTE building? Um, what courses are offered through the CTE building?
St. Paul is nursing and, um, is there?
Auto.
Auto at St. Paul and nursing, right?
And there are some students at St. Paul that had enrolled in a couple of those classes that are able to come to Huntsville and take those classes at the CTE buildings in Huntsville. But the problem is, those students have to leave St. Paul to come to Huntsville. And how can we get higher teachers that can remain in St. Paul, so that those students don't come, have to come to Huntsville? And then I, I think Superintendent Kimble said, you know, it's not all bad to, to bring those kids together, but I do think some of those students in St. Paul may wanna stay in St. Paul and get their classes taken here and there. So how can we bring teachers in and keep our promises of offering those classes?
Well, when we first started this idea for the CTE, I remember Mr. Baker, um, from the high school saying, our problem was going to be getting people to come and teach these courses. Because if you're a diesel mechanic, you're not gonna come and work for a thirty-five thousand dollar teacher salary, unless you're not really good at your job at all, you know, and there are people, like Mr. Baker, a retired, um, chemical engineer, who felt called to come teach, and we've been blessed with him for all these years, but those are hard to come by. And so I think that's a problem we're gonna have to address. Some of these people may not be on the regular teacher salary, and that is a really hard thing, and as a teacher, I know there'll be some teachers that would not like me saying that, but we may have to address that issue, that we're gonna have to pay people for the job they do.
I did, so, kinda started?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, um, back to your St. Paul CTE building, as of this morning. Uh, I had a conversation this morning, there is someone that is at CTE, or at St. Paul CTE now, that is teaching those classes. There's gonna be, um, some, uh, small engine chainsaws, weird scenario, that he's gonna be teaching, uh, one day a week, he's gonna be doing that. Um, there's an ATV class that he's gonna be doing also. Um, and there was one other thing, um, that he was gonna be doing, and I don't know the gentleman's name, that has been hired.
That's great to hear confirmed, 'cause.
Yeah.
Audrey did mention that.
Yeah, well, that, that as of this morning is the case.
That's great.
Um, so that's good news. That's great news. Um, and we are fixing to graduate, uh, you know, CN, CNAs, uh, are literally in the process of graduating now. It, it's a huge thing. It's, it's changing people's lives, is what it's doing, these programs. Um, as far as, uh, what is offered, there's diesel mechanics, there's welding, there's electrical, um, part, partial electrical side of things, CNA stuff, now we've got small engine, we've got some auto body stuff, auto mechanic stuff. Um, we've got HVACs, uh, is in place as part of it. Um, so there's several programs, and as time goes on, our plan was, is we had to get a base, and we'd done a survey of the students to see what they wanted. So that's kind of what we based everything off of in the very beginning. Now, as we all know, you, when you're talking about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids, their minds change from the time you get a cup of coffee, right? So, um, every year, it may not be the same interest if you've done a survey every year, but as time goes on, the plan is, is to monitor those programs, to see what's going to be the best fit for the community as far as what the kids are wanting, and what areas of life they're wanting to go to, as far as careers go. and what areas of life they're wanting to go to as far as careers go. And whenever they can walk out of here, graduating high school, and they can leave here and not go to college, and that was never their plan to go to college, and they can walk out of these CTE programs that we're offering today, and they can start making as much money as mom and dad is making at, that's been at their job fifteen or twenty years. It's a huge, huge thing. Plus the retention of those kids leaving here in diesel mechanics or whatever the trade may be, there's huge opportunities. This is their home. There's huge opportunity that they're gonna open a business up here down the road and have another business in Madison County. So that's, that's the plan. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. We're talking about those teachers. There is uh, some joint stuff that's going on with um, Harrison and NWA and different people on sharing the cost on our teachers to make sure that we have those type of people in place because instead of us paying a fifty thousand dollar salary, I'm just using that number, fifty thousand dollar a year salary, you know, if that's a shared and we're paying twenty-five, and NWA or somebody else is paying twenty-five, that's huge. That's huge. And they're providing instructors.
I think everyone in the community is excited about the partnership with North, Northark.
Northark, right.
For our CNAs and, and it's nice to see, and we'll share it as we get, we're just waiting for pictures, but we'll share it too. But there are students that are going, that are already working at Countryside and at Mennoview. So they're already doing some of their training and some of their workforce in the community. So I think we're all in agreement with that part.
There's a huge graduation or graduation of those, those kids at Harrison next week is my understanding.
So, yeah, absolutely. I think that um, to, when you start talking about diesel mechanics, you start talking about HVAC, CNAs, nursing, things like that, you're talking about a specialized division. And, and sir, how can you expect somebody to come here and make thirty-five thousand a year? And again, these are just broad numbers, not saying that that's what they make or whatever. When, as an HVAC technician, you can go out and make over a hundred thousand if you're working for the right company, right? So, but if you've looked at the polls and, and, and the community in general, the, the help wanted ads for these positions are extremely long. A- as fast as people are graduating, graduating HVAC and nursing and all these things, if they have the right mentor and they have the right person to help them, they can be snatched up immediately for jobs. People want these kids. They want them right out of high school because if we're offering, I'm gonna use HVAC for an example. So I looked into this recently. There is a year apprenticeship and then a year hands-on training that you have to have to get your HVAC license, okay? And so if we can offer that through this, the, the, the year apprenticeship or the, the year of schooling now while they're in high school and then give them that apprenticeship as soon as they come out of high school, that's huge. Like Danny said, they're, they're gonna be making more than all their parents are making. And so if finding staff is a problem, maybe we need to explore the option of narrowing down and putting these classes closer together throughout the week, and maybe talking to these other companies that have owners that are needing these technicians and needing these nursing staff and CNAs and diesel mechanics, and saying, hey, look, we've got this great pool of kids that are wanting this stuff. We're having issues with retaining teachers. If it's, if it's legally allowed, why not bring them in here to help? Because then that also gives them firsthand knowledge of, hey, this guy's gonna make it in the HVAC world. I, I really, or you know what? Maybe he doesn't have a spot, but I promise you, you, you've got a, a huge pool of fellow business owners that you can refer that, that young student right out to, right out of high school and get him work. So I think that there are ways around this. You have to focus on, like Connie said, you can't pay somebody that can make a bunch of money unless it's just in their heart to, that's what they all, the only thing they wanna do. Can't expect them to come and make no, no kind of money when they can make that money. But I think there are other options as far as getting skilled, specialized people in those areas to come in here and help those kids when they're right out of high school, get snatched up by a company, get right to work.
I'm just glad you guys were all passionate about the, uh, the, about a, a different path, because not all students are on that, yeah, four-year path.
I mean, you look, you look at it like, I didn't go to college, um, and had no desire to. Well, I said, I went to college for like two hours, and that was it. And I'm like, I can tell you right now, this is not for me. But I know, and also there was several business owners that own pressure washing companies that some days they make more money in an hour than a surgeon does. And they didn't go to school. You don't have to go to school in today's society to be very wealthy. We're, we're coming up in a society now where people wanna pay contractors to come out and do this. So your multimillion and million dollar companies are gonna be your contractors. We need to start offering that in the schools now to where we have people because the, the population of people that wanna get out there and work hard is starting to diminish. And so we need to make sure we have people coming up to still offer those trades.
And I think that's exactly why people like Tammy Davis and then our board, which Danny was a part of, fought so hard to get, to get those CTE parents here.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So as a couple people in the previous um, forums have said, the Title IX issues and transparency issues will go away at some point. And so looking toward the future, what are the issues that you think are the top concerns that the board needs to address? So not those two, not Title IX and transparency, because we've talked about that. But going forward, what are the top concerns that the board needs to address? And what would you address if you were elected or re-elected?
Me?
Sure.
Cause I'm very passionate about this. I, we had Mr. Baker pull up the rankings. And ten years ago, we were number two out of the top twenty-two schools in this area. This year, we are number twenty out of twenty-two. That is a huge fall over ten years. Um, my kids, my four that graduated, all graduated before then. I feel they got a really great education during that time. We had five kids, including yours, going to MIT. And she was kind of into the, right at the beginning of the, before it fell.
What moved us to the Huntsville School District.
Yes, see? And so I think we've got to get back there. And we've got to figure out what it is that these other schools did that moved them up above us? Or what did we not do that all of a sudden ma- made us drop? Um, I do know that in that ten-year span, there, this has been, last year, this year, we've got these huge retirements. And I mean, that just comes with, you know, people getting old. But the, before that, it was pretty much the same staff, you know, not very much change. But in that ten years, we sure saw huge changes in building administration and at the upper level. And I think that may be some of it. We may have lost the focus and the goals and, and the vision that we had that was carrying us academically. And so I think we just have got to get back onto that.
That's um, that's a good answer. Stability is the word that, that I'm gonna use because that's where, that's where it's at, is stability. It's um, it's getting everybody on the same page. It is staying on the same course and everybody continuing to follow that course and not waver. You just, uh, stability. Stability and cha- you know, change is good in a lot of ways, but then changes also can be really bad in others. And so if you have a lot of turnover, you have a lot of change, um, you have instability. And so it's hard to have everyone focus and be pulling the wagon, so to speak, the same direction whenever there's all these new things coming into play. And so um, uh, my answer to that would just be stability. Um, get on the, get on the right track and, and stay and try not to have any turnover. Can you repeat the question for me?
I can. Oh, it was me. Okay.
No, I don't even know who's asking questions.
No, but I'm gonna change the last, one of the last questions as a follow-up to Connie. That's where my line went on. Okay, so the Title IX and transparency issues we've already discussed, and they will be resolved or, you know, go away. That, that's kind of in the past. So we wanna look to the future. And what are the top concerns that the board needs to address, or what is the top concern that you would address if you were elected?
So I think you have to uh, kinda like both Danny and Connie said, you have to look at what other schools are doing, um, especially the schools that have, have taken our spots on the rankings. You know, what are they doing? And, and what are we not doing? Um, and then you, I, I think personally you do have to change. I think in today's society, e- everything's revolving. Where, you know, the, the old adage of um, get in here, sit down, put your nose in a book, doesn't work for everybody anymore. And so uh, speaking on rankings, you have to um, you know, look, look, why not try to get the parents and the kids involved and see, how do these students learn the best, you know? I struggled at a book, you know, but if you put me on hands-on stuff, I, I was, I could excel. And so I think that we have to look at and adapt with the changing, not just community, but world. I mean, i- it's revolving, technology and everything like that's coming into play to where what should kind of become a thing in the past. I mean, our kids are bringing home ta- like computers. We didn't even hardly have a computer in school. You have to, yeah. I mean, so you have to, you do have to look at the way everything's evolving, and you do have to change as long as it is in the betterment of the students.
So I'm gonna go for a, for just a minute.
Okay, I'm just, what Danny said about all change isn't always necessarily good. And I think in all of this change that we had, that was part of the problem with like, you have, somebody comes in and they say, oh, this is the program we're gonna have, and this is the program we're gonna have, and this is a, and the teachers really do know what they're doing, I'd say for the most part. I mean, they know, they know what programs work, what don't, but they're saying, oh, now we're gonna have a new math program. Two years later, we have a different math program. Now we have a literacy program. Now you're gonna teach this instead of that. And when there's so much change like that, um, it's just chaos. And you, you can't perform, the teachers are performing their best, and then therefore the students aren't gonna, you're not gonna get the most out of your kids either. So we have to be careful when we say, we need to go look at other places and see what they're doing. We have to say first, what are we doing well here? Take a hard look. What is not working? And then go look for other ideas that might be able to work here.
So in the uh, past few profiles that we've done on the different candidates for the different zones, one issue that came up that uh, was new for me that I hadn't heard, that, that some of the candidates were kinda running on it is we spend too much time focused on sports and not academics. So I want you guys to address that question. Does the school, and we had one candidate say, we don't feel like sports should maybe be played on Wednesday night because that's a church night. Now, I realize that the Huntsville School District has to work with the other school districts in determining when games are played. But it, it was a new, um, it was a new platform that I hadn't heard. And I, I've heard now two or three candidates say, maybe we shouldn't be playing sports on Wednesday nights. And are we spending too much time focused on sports and not academics? So address that.
I'm up.
By choice.
You know, I totally understand where those questions could come from. I really do. Um, but at the same time, I played sports all through school. Just because you like sports or don't like sports, that means nothing in the real world. It really doesn't. It's about who you are as a person and what you intend on doing, and do the best you can. But with sports and athletics, I have learned, and I did learn um, all those years of how to overcome defeat and how to continue to push forward whenever the last thing that what you wanted to do was continue forward. And so it taught, taught me a lot of discipline and it taught me um, that there's gonna be hard times and you're gonna get through them. And those are things that I took with me for the rest of my life, and I use till today. Um, so sports are not for everybody, and that's okay. Um, I, I did participate, and I'm glad that I did, just for those reasons. Um, as far as um, putting too much money into the sports programs and not enough in academics, was that your question or a question?
Yeah, people just said we're focused too much on sports and not academics.
Sure. Um, and like I said, I can understand where that would come from, but I definitely don't see that being the case. I, I know that's not the case. Academics by far is where we focus. Um, academics and these new careers and opportunities that we're presenting to the kids now. Um, and the sports itself and athletic events, they kinda help fund themselves as they go along anyway. And so it's not just like we're putting all this money out for athletic events and, and football. Um, the fundraisers, gate tickets, concessions, et cetera, there's a lot of money comes through the academics program that they earn themselves. So um, that would be my answer.
So I could be wrong, but back in the day when I played football, last thing you wanted to do is show up to football practice with bad grades. You know, you, you got discipline for that, and, and it taught you character, it taught you that first and foremost is your education, and then you get to participate in extracurricular activities. But I think to sit here and say that we're putting too much time into sports over education, we also probably wanna stop and think, sometimes, again, it could go back to those kids that aren't very good in school, but sometimes that safe place and that place that gives them peace from, whether it be at home, life, or whatever, could be those very things such as sports. I mean, let's be real, some kids may not even stay in our schools to get that education if they don't have that sport to go and play. And so I think that you just have to look at it from that perspective, and you also just, you keep that fine balance, you know? You keep your grades up to, and even if it's, okay, I, I think we can't go backwards, and we can't lower the GPA to where you just have to have a straight D or whatever, the, you know, however they do their scoring nowadays. I know in like lower stuff, it's like one, two, three. But I think that you still have to, don't just allow anybody to play sports. You still make sure that they're focusing on their school, um, their, their, their education and, and keeping their grades up to be able to participate in those things. But don't turn those kids away that look to that as a safe place or what they need to get through the day, you know, for whatever the reason may be. So I think that's very important.
Um, I definitely would not agree with ever taking sports out of school. Sports, like Danny said, teach so many lessons. All four of my kids played sports, two of whom were valedictorian. The others graduated with honors, won honors. So that did not interfere their grades, but they knew from home that the education came first. And I think I get a lot of support from the coaches, like Coach Williams in football. He checks those kids' grades. He is on those kids. He makes sure that he's building a relationship with them and telling them that education is important. Um, this is one of those things that need to be open. If the community's feeling too much pressure to not be able to have Wednesday nights for church, we as a district can say, hey, we're going to limit and less like at tournaments, cause that's when you can't schedule. That there, you can't just schedule a game on, regular games on Wednesday nights. We're gonna save it, the community feels that needs to be for church. And I don't see there's any reason that, that couldn't happen. Um, I know my children, they would have practice sometimes on Sundays. My kids did not go on Sundays. That was never held against them by Coach Barry or Coach Stafford. So, you know, I think the coaches need to, and, and I think they are, they can be understanding. And, but we just need to, if that's what the community's concerned about, then we need to say, hey, no, we're gonna keep Wednesday for families and church.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Connie because um, you know, religion has to come first. Whether you're Christian or, or whatever you follow, that has to come first. And so it has to be known by our, our coaching staff that if a child is not at your game or your practice on Wednesday because um, of religion, you're absolutely taking no repercussion against that child. I mean, you know, so I think that that is very, very important to, to keep that in mind as well.
But I have kids, I have Coach, like I said, Coach Williams is working with me, I have a kid right now that was having such a struggle getting to school and early in the morning. And he is working with him, and his attendance has improved drastically because of Coach Williams working with him and me letting Coach Williams know where he is. So it's a super important part of education.
Coach Williams has actually brought back the um, the GPA standards for, on the players too. Not that they're not, are not, there's a blanket one obviously by districts and by AAA, but he's brought it back within, within Huntsville, and you get rewarded for the different levels of which, and you've seen a big, I mean, we've run pictures of, and the amount of, when it started, you know, we had a picture of the kids that were at this, and so they got rewarded with like a, like an academic all-star style t-shirt, okay? And now we have like a page of pictures where we have to put them in groups because we can't put them all. So that's, I mean, that's, that's great, but, but it took Coach Williams to, to really do the initiative behind that.
Well, that's great, but, no, I'm sorry. I was, that's great because um, as all adults sitting here, we all understand that life is hard and you're always gonna be thrown challenges, and, and this world owes you nothing. And so you have to work for what you get in, in this world. And so for these kids to understand that they have to work to get good grades, to spend time on that field, you know, tackling each other or running up and down the basketball court or swinging the golf club, that's important for those kids to understand and, and kind of iterate with Danny's that it builds character. And, and I think that- It builds character and and I think that, yeah, that's absolutely right, correct.
I just wanted to follow up real briefly that um as far as the Wednesday night, same, you know, Connie said something about Sunday, you know? That's where I we did at one time in life. There were some Sunday practices and I remember going to some at times and other times, no, I tried to never go on Sunday practices. Um but um I really truly believe I would support that staff as far as the coaches. They're not going to be any type of, there's there's not gonna be anything done or said whatsoever if they are skipping a Sunday or a Wednesday. So if that's a preference that their family or their self, you know, didn't wanna participate in, there's not gonna be repercussion because of it.
So I think in the interest of time, we probably need to be the last question. So really hard.
What is it?
This is in the interest, well, I think, um, let's get going. By the interest of time.
I get to ask the last question and it's real hard.
This is the hardest question.
We each get a hundred dollars, right?
If you find, if you find the golden Easter egg, it's in somewhere in this office.
It's in Ellen's office. Okay, so who was the first question asked to?
Logan.
Okay.
And we just went.
So you'll close, so I'm.
We didn't even follow.
Well, um this is the hardest question of the night.
That's all I mean.
Of course, that's the that's the order of the the game, Danny.
Okay, come on.
Why should people vote for you?
Why should people vote for me? That is a hard question. Um determination. I feel as though you you know, I'm gonna go way out here, okay? So bear with me a minute and I'll try to make it as brief as possible. Um I've spent a lot of my life um trying to give back to the community. Twenty-plus years, I don't, I don't know. I I've always tried to give back to the community and try to make it a better place and whenever I found it, I feel like that's my job. Um I'm not wanting anything in return. I'm not asking for anything in return. I am just, it's my home and I wanna be able to make it a better place. Uh I feel as though that it's to for someone to vote for me, um. They're gonna get my fairness. They're gonna get my honesty with them and they're gonna get my hard work. I've spent hours and hours and hours of time in this community um to give back. And especially on the school board in the last few years has been an amazing amount of time away from my family. And um lots of hard times, but lots of good times also. Um they're gonna get honesty and they're gonna get trust, plain and simple, um with me and they're gonna get hard work. And I I've I'm very fortunate that I've been able to serve on the school board a couple of different times. And serve the community and serve our district, serve our kids and our teachers. I've always supported all of our staff, all of our PPC, classified people, everybody across the board. Um I've tried to do the very best that I could um with what I was able to do in my position. And um I've been very, I'm very thankful for that, that they gave me that opportunity in life. And if they see fit for me to continue the progress that we've made and all the things that we've done to better this community. I I can literally walk out this door right now and know that it's better than whenever I came. Um there's a lot of big positive things that has taken place and I'm very proud that I was able to be a part of that. So I ask for your vote.
And you get to last.
Oh, that's right. I'll I'll probably go last.
I know, yeah, you were. Um I think you should vote for me because as far as I can remember, there has never been a retired teacher on the board. And I think after thirty-eight years in education, I bring a whole different perspective as a school board member than has ever been on the board. I think there are times when in the past that I've seen um things presented to the board. And when I'm saying, I'm not speaking right now, like in the past when I was on PPC, different superintendents sometimes. Um the they would present things to the board and I think that the board did not understand the true ramifications of what was being presented. But you weren't allowed to speak and sometimes they were also told, don't speak to teachers. And so I think things could have been helped along by somebody knowing the other side. And maybe sometimes just asking questions that only teachers would know to ask. Um I love this district. I have four kids, like I said, went through here. I've loved, I'm up to probably about five thousand kids now who I've been privileged to teach and I've. People always went, oh, what's the worst kid? I don't even remember the worst kid. I can remember that. I just have a fond memory of all the kids. I don't, I have been blessed with that. Um every year I have a friend, Tim Dotson, used to ask me, well, do you have a good class? I'd say, oh, this is the best one yet. He says, you say that every year. I said, well, I guess I'm just lucky. They get better every year. And I think that my love for this district, the love for education, the love for the kids. Um helps me be a better school board member. And I'd ask you to vote for me.
So I uh the reason I'm asking for the vote is because I grew up here. Um and for sure, for the next twelve to fifteen years, I've got blood that's gonna be coming through this school. And so uh I I'm very passionate about the education that these students um are retaining and being offered through the school district. But I think that uh what makes me the most qualified for this position is experience. Um having been a sheriff's deputy here in Madison County, I was tasked with um coming in con- coming in contact with people that I both went to school with. That was family uh that both do and know like me. Um and I think that throughout my my time as a law enforcement officer here, um I think for the most part, everybody can say I was fair. That I treated everybody equal, um and then it didn't matter who you were or what you did or you were always treated fair. It was very black and white. You did right or you did wrong. And so I think that that really helps to set my character of fairness. Um and determination to help better this community. Um I also think the experience in owning my own companies and having the the experience in retaining employees. Uh figuring out why you can't retain employees, the the financial side of things and being able to look into that. I think that that is also a very big um benefit that I can bring to the table as well as the board. Um and then being vocal and being being transparent with the community uh within the the legal realms of what you can be transparent from. Uh so that's why I'd ask for your vote.
All right. Well, thank you guys for your time today. I know it's the Saturday before Easter, so it was not in the most convenient time. And we really appreciate you coming here and I know the community will really appreciate your uh comments and all the answers that you gave. So thank you for all.
You're welcome. Thank you. Now I've got ten questions for y'all.